We have a 7:20 meeting with John Knight, tree warden, for report on the Asian Longhorn beetle threat. Mr. Knight, if you'd step forward, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening. Of your many duties here in the town of Shrewsbury, one of them is the tree warden.
I'm just going to give you.
And the threat of the Asian Longhorn beetle, which has been in the news recently.
Yeah, and this has been, this has been a topic of conversation at tree, annual tree warden meetings for probably eighteen years, and the devastation it causes if it comes into an area. I hate to see it, but we're going to have to deal with it. First notification we received was on August thirteenth. Myself and Brad Stone attended the initial briefing, sponsored by the city of Worcester. We were also there for the, the press release. At this meeting, the town of Shrewsbury advised that it was not within the regulated area. The line actually ran up the northeast cutoff right along the Shrewsbury line. On August nineteenth, Mr. Magado and Mr. Hale attended a second briefing. At this time, Department of Conservation, Recreation, and U.S. Department of Agriculture advised the regulated area had been expanded to include Shrewsbury. Information presented the severe nature of the threat and the need to immediate actions to be, to stop the spread of the infestation. What they had found them was, I think they had found them over at Great Brook Valley and also Worcester Country Club, so that automatically moved that line a mile and a half from where it was. On August nineteenth, Mr. Maga, um, attended this, on August nineteenth, resulting from the restrictive order, and to avoid any potential expansion of the threat, the decision was made by Mr. Magado to shut down the ad, the ad waste drop-off program scheduled for August twenty-third. The town website was updated with available information starting on the nineteenth. Since the nineteenth, the involved communities, Worcester Holden, Boyles, and West Boyles and Shrewsbury, have been in constant contact and communication, working directly with DCR and USDA. Since the nineteenth, we've been working on how best to resolve the ad waste program and how to handle the upcoming curbside collection program. The city of Worcester announced that it will accommodate residents from the surrounding towns that reside within the regulated area at the Clark Street facility for wood waste only. On August twentieth, a letter was sent, Mr. Magado, to persons involved in the green industry located in Shrewsbury, or working in Shrewsbury, advising them the threat caused by the Asian Longhorn beetle. The letter was patented after a similar letter sent by City Manager O'Brien. Decisions have been made by all communications, each of the involved communities. Over the nineteenth and twentieth, requests were made for the Department of Environmental Protection relative ad waste ban at the Wheeler Brede Millbury Incorporated facility. On August twentieth, Mr. LeBeau, Mr. Hale, Mr. Jakes, and Mr. Magado attended the Worcester Community Meeting. At this meeting, details of USDA response were outlined. On August twentieth, Mr. Hale arranged for the city of Worcester to provide a video of the various public sessions to run, run on Shrewsbury Municipal Cable on Channel thirty. On August twentieth, Mr. Hale arranged through Sergeant Anderson to make use of the, of the county's nine-one-one system to advise residents the ad waste program is being shut down. By former Mr. Capella placed two message boards into service. Since August twentieth, we have fielded several calls from residents, beetle sightings, field visits have taken place, no beetles so far have been found. On August twenty-second, Mr. Hale and Mr. Magado attended a meeting of managers of the five communities involved. Additional information was provided by DCR and USDA, and discussions centered on the nature of the USDA response and what steps must be taken to stop the spread of the Asian Longhorn beetle. There was extended discussion on how yad and wood waste were, area to be handled. The matter of yad waste ban at Waste Management Incorporated was raised once again. There will be a regular meeting of the, of the managers. On August twenty-second, there was a meeting relative to GIS function. Mr. McCollum, the engineering department, represented the town of Shrewsbury, updated maps, was sent to all parties to keep the information current. On August twenty-third, the staff was present at drop-off location to provide information to those residents that were not reached by a newspaper or website or nine-one-one and the message boards. I think we had probably somewhere in the city of forty, fifty people pass through there, and I think most, most people were very understanding. On the twenty-fifth, representatives of USDA visited South Street drop-off location and compost facility, inspected evidence for ALB. Both areas showed no sign of the Asian Longhorn beetle. USDA reviewed with Nancy Allen and myself the handling procedures. Other sites, visits also took place. We looked at a couple of wood, wood cutting businesses, just to make sure there was nothing up in the Greensdale area, make sure there was nothing up there. On August twenty-fifth, field inspections began in the city of Worcester and the regulated area, located areas of infestation to ascertain the perimeter. On August twenty-fifth, the resumption of the ad waste drop-off program, September sixth, was announced. New rules are now in effect in detail to deal with the wood waste from the regulated zone that will be handled at the city of Worcester facility on Clark Street.
Should mention that we, my office, along with Michael, heavily involved with this all last week. John was away at the Public Works Conference. He's back, so obviously as tree warden, he'll be resuming a lot of these activities. That's the reason why there was such heavy involvement, myself and Mr. Hale. A couple of highlights, I think, of what's happened since we got first involved with this back on, I think, August thirteenth. We've been in very close contact. The communities have been working very closely together, see, which has been outstanding during this entire process. USDA have been great, DCR. You know, we, we very much appreciate the patience of the public in dealing with the fact that we had to cancelate the drop-off, cancel the drop-off program this past Saturday. As John mentioned, we're prepared to reopen the program on September sixth. So on September sixth, the drop-off program on South Street will be back in business. But it will be in, with some different rules, based upon the order that has been issued by DCR, relative to how wood waste are handled from the regulated area. And, and what I have over on the side is a map that's been prepared, based upon the regulated area of August nineteenth, two thousand eight. Now, as John said, originally, the very first meeting, the regulated area did not come into the town of Shrewsbury. It was entirely contained within the city of Worcester, the town of Holden, and the town of West Boyleson. On the nineteenth, it was expanded into Holden, West Boyleson, Boyleson, and Shrewsbury. Boyleson, Shrewsbury being new additions, to encompass the area in Shrewsbury, north of Route Nine, northwest of Maple Avenue, and west of Route one forty. And that's being considered the regu, regulated area. Now, when we open to accept yard waste on September sixth, we'll be able to accept on South Street, grass and leaves and green debris from the entire community, we will be able to handle and process through the South Street location. However, wood products, and wood products being greater than a half inch diameter, from the regulated area cannot be moved from the regulated area to the non-regulated area, because that's how the beetle gets spread. Beetle pretty much stays stationary. Its main means of transporting from one location to another is when human beings do that work for them. So we have to impress upon residents of the regulated area not to move wood waste, wood products, firewood and the like, from the regulated area into the non-regulated area, because that's the means of spreading, the primary means of spreading of the beetle. For residents in the regulated area that have wood waste that need to dispose of, city of Worcester has made their Clark Street facility available, and the Clark Street facility is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays. And if people go to our website, starting tomorrow morning, we've already prepared the update for the website, and probably by nine o'clock tomorrow morning, we'll have all this information up on the website. The beetle, again, they have established the regulate, the regulated area. The regulated area is pretty much a mile and a half from the location of the nearest infested tree. They then basically take a, a radius of a mile and a half from that point, create that as the regulated area. Now, they have issued a regulatory order. The regulatory order that we actually have on our website is the original order. The current order that we're going to be operating under is still being sent to us, and that greatly relaxes. If you read the original regulation, regulatory order, they even prohibited the transportation of wood products even within the zone itself. They have since revised that, and as soon as they can get to us, the current version will be posting that on, on the website. As mentioned by John, several of us were able to go to Worcester to attend the community meeting that was put on by the city. It was an excellent meeting, there was, there were a few Shrewsbury residents there that also witnessed the program. I don't know, John, you want to, at this point in time, talk about your comments relative, your observations relative to that meeting?
Well, just a few comments about the meeting and about the problem itself. I, I think, as we do provide background, and, and a note that came from, I think it was from the city and from USDA, first of all, people should understand, it's not a threat to people, it's not a threat to pets, it doesn't attack or carry any diseases. This is purely an insect that can have a quite devastating impact on trees, but not on animal life. Also, I think it's very important that the residents of Shrewsbury who live in the regulated area should make sure that their landscapers who are doing work for them understand what the rules regarding disposal is, because as someone in the green industry, I've been contacted by the town of Shrewsbury and by the city of Worcester. I've yet to be contacted by DCR or DAR or any state body, and there's a, as we all know, there's a lot of landscapers out there who may not be located, say, through the phone book or through many methods. So there are a lot of people in the green industry out there who may not be aware of the problem, and I think it, we, we need to call upon our residents to be sure to, if any wood is being transported from their property, that their landscapers understand what the situation is. Actually, Mr. Magado, we heard at the meeting that the city was also going to establish a contractor's yard. Has anything happened with that as yet?
I haven't, I believe that was going to be announced today. When we, the managers met on Friday, City Manager O'Brien told us the location, and that he was waiting for some final paperwork to be signed, and that they would be announcing the so-called contractor's yard. And that's an important fact, that people involved in the green industry, tree removal and the like, that are working within the reg, regulated area, will have a place to dispose of that material, provided to them free of charge by the city slash USDA. So every effort is being made to notify people and to provide them a legal, safe, inexpensive alternative, and that's all designed to avoid people making decisions and depositing material to further spread the, the insect. And if the area were to expand, then it would be, might be necessary to establish additional locations, and part of our discussions on Friday dealt with, a small portion of our discussions dealt with that. You mentioned that you were contacted by both the town of Shrewsbury and the city of Worcester. Then today, or actually tomorrow morning, we'll be providing to USDA the listing of everyone that we've contacted, because they're, they're going to start the process of basically creating a database of known individuals in the green industry, because they're going to be going out and actually visiting. As, as John mentioned today, part of our discussions when the USDA people were in this morning, there were questioning about, you know, do we know of additional locations in the community that have been processing wood waste, which is why they wanted to see South Street, why they wanted to see our composting operation.
And the further compounded, you get a lot of the tree, tree contractors that bring their, their wood chips and to, to landscape companies like Big Lowe's. Big Lowe's takes a bunch of it, and, you know, these are things that we have to watch out for.
Now, once the tree's cut and it's chipped, as long as the chips are by two, by at least two dimensions, one inch or less, then, you know, the insect's been taken care of. So the USDA has a very clear protocol on how they're going to handle this entire matter, from how the trees are identified, how the zones are created, the initial zone of quarter mile and then up to a half a mile, and then the mile and a half regulated area. So they really have developed a very tried and true procedure on how this situation, how this threat's to be handled. We're fully integrated with that, not only with the USDA and DCR, but also with the other communities. We're trying to avoid duplicating things and reinventing the wheel, so to speak, which is why, for instance, you notice all our communications look the same, because what's happening is one document's being prepared, and each of the communities are using that same document. So that, mapping the same thing, that we're being, any maps that we're going to be using will be provided by USDA, DCR, because they want the public to receive, regardless of the community you happen to live in, same information.
And also, just on the note on the tree, it doesn't affect all trees. There are certain trees that'll be host trees. That listing, I think, is probably on the website also, but we planted for thirty years Norway maples, which is the biggest, what they like the most. So if it hits a few of the trees, it's going to be some massive clearings throughout Shrewsbury, Worcester, and Holden, the other communities.
Mr. Chairman.
What's on the ball?
As both Mr. Magado and Mr. Knight have mentioned, the website, the material that's posted on the website is, is excellent if people want to learn more about this. There are several, there's like a PowerPoint presentation, lots of excellent photographs of what people should be looking for. Interestingly, this insect likes to be up in the top of a tree, in the top third or half, very little activity down low. Probably the easiest thing for people to see, perfectly round holes, about the size of a dime. That's when the, when the insect exits the tree. Evidently, it manages to eat, I mean, a perfectly round hole is made. And I just encourage people to, to look at the website, because there's a great deal of material that explains how the insect got to the United States, how it's transported, what its life cycle is, and, and what the ramifications are. Unfortunately, we're the fourth occurrence in the entire United States. I guess fortunately, we're not the first occurrence in the United States, because the USDA has a very professional, well-managed, well-conceived plan to eliminate this problem, and they feel they've eradicated it in the other three, and they expect it to be the same here. But it is a, a lengthy process.
We could be talking at least seven, seven years out, between tree removals and monitoring.
Other questions from members of the board? Ms. Miller?
How, at the South Street facility, how will you monitor that the residents within that area aren't just, you know, distributing wood?
Well, effective on the sixth, we're going to have three staff members down here. There's going to be one checking, one checking registrations and licenses coming in to see where the people are from. There'll be, know the people directing people where to go, and there's going to be somebody else watching what's being dumped.
And likewise, for the Worcester facility, they'll be checking?
Worcester's doing the same thing.
Yes, I'm sure, okay.
Right. Again, it's very, you know, it's, I think, it's unusual for us to do this, obviously, but it's important that, you know, we, we make every reasonable effort to make sure that the insect doesn't spread, and it's not going to, it's not going to get there on its own. It's going to get there because, it gets there because people bring it there. And so we need to be very, very careful about that, and we, we're hoping that over the next two weeks, since the next period will be open, it will be September sixth, that we're getting the word out. We're finding that if you inform residents what, what's required, what the expectations are, we're at ninety-nine percent people coming in the gate will all be taken care of. You know, people need to, you know, again, if it's, if it's green, it's clean, you know, from all the community. You can bring it to South Street, it's grass clippings, hedge clippings, you know, evergreens, that kind of thing. But if it's a wood waste from the regulated area, greater than a half inch in diameter, you're going to have to take it to the, the Clark Street facility. Now, people need to also be watching the website, because that map may change. Okay, that map changed from August thirteenth to August nineteenth, and it may change again. So as we get closer to September sixth, obviously, we'll be updating the information, putting up on the website, maps and the like. And we're hoping that people stay informed.
The thing, I'd just like to say, I think you've done an excellent job at the communication to date, and, you know, I mean, we've really got the word out, and I think we've got it out to a majority of the community, so, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. DePaul?
We haven't really talked about, I know we talked about how serious it is, but we know, obviously, that the agencies are going to try to use the most limited way to control this as possible, but maybe to stress how important this is, you could talk a little bit of what the extreme steps would be if this can't be controlled, because it is, it's serious. And, and I know we're not talking about going there yet, but I think people, it'd be helpful to people to know, if it does spread and it's not taken seriously now, how serious it could get.
My understanding of what's going to happen is, they find a host tree, everything within a quarter mile that is a possible host will have to be cut and removed. And the quarter mile to a half mile, they will be doing root, root injections or tree injections, with a herbicide, I think is Merit is one of the trade names they use. And I don't know how that's going to play into effect with the aquifers we have in town either, so.
Is it everything, or is it just the trees that would be affected?
Host trees.
Host trees. But that's still pretty devastating.
Yes, it is.
So it's serious.
It's maples. Maples are a big, big community tree, it's probably the biggest part of it.
You're talking trees with years and years of growth, it'd be, just have to be completely cut down.
And I think if everybody read the article Sunday in the paper, showed you a picture in, in one of the towns in New Jersey, there wasn't many trees left. And people that had large shade trees now have three in the caliper trees, and they may never see, reach any maturity, you know, as far as, it takes twenty, thirty years, you got a tree that's halfway decent.
Thank you.
Other questions from members of the board? Mr. Tattaglin?
I got a couple, John. If you have to cut down, you know, thirty-five maple trees, who pays the cost of that? Is that by the property owners, or?
Right now, I understand it's the federal government.
The federal government. We're, we're not going to do any of the cutting. The federal government will, will handle that. They'll be signing up contractors to do that work, and both the cutting of trees and the application of the insecticide is all done on the USDA jurisdiction, authority, their expense. Individual property owners would, will not see any of that expense borne by themselves.
And the treatment is systemic, putting the chemicals in it, and it goes up and?
Goes up into the bark.
Goes up into the bark.
Into the tree.
But again, I think we need to stress, right currently, town of Shrewsbury is only involved, at the present time, as being a part of the regulated area, which means that no ALB in Shrewsbury, which means that as long as we maintain vigilance about not getting that regulated area expanded, we will not have to deal with any of these issues of cutting and, and the like.
There was one other thing, I think it was Japanese beetles, where there's a, I think it's called milky spore, that you put in the ground, and it, it makes it so the, the beetle can't reproduce in the, for like twelve years or something. Is there anything like that in the works for these, these beetles?
No. I don't think there's any known chemical that works on them, any known predators to them.
There's no known predators, is what I understood, right?
At the present time, no.
Thank you.
Any, uh?
I, I have a question for, for John, which is, trying to identify where the Asian Longhorn beetle is around or not. Do you have spotters in the area? I mean, how, how are you trying to determine if?
We've been falling off on complaints. I know Mike and I went out to a house on Mercury Drive, and, you know, not sure on that one. We passed it on to the state. If they report it to the, there's a, on the website, there's a place they can actually report it, and that goes to a listing with DCR, and they're passing it on to the federal government, those, all those complaints will be followed up on, unless we see something actually obvious, and we can, we can make a phone call. But I haven't seen anything, you know, actually, I haven't seen an exit hole, and I, I've only seen wood shavings at the gentleman's house today, and to me, it may have been, might have been carpenter ants, I don't know.
Again, as people call in, we go out. I've been out on a couple of visits, sending people out, this sort of resident, you know, gets some, some reply, because there's a lot of concern about getting put in a queue and no one ever getting out there. We, we got excellent contacts with the USDA, we have email addresses, direct access, and we're able to feed this information in, but people can make their own self-reporting. If they go to the website, there's a couple of telephone numbers there, and there's also an actual website that you can click on, fill out the form on, on the website, submit the form, there's someone actually pulling this information off the forms, and they're setting up some sort of tree eye system in order to, as they ramp up for this thing, in order to see, obviously, they want to get out and not only look at infestations, but they also want to be searching the region, the area, I should say, to try to establish a parameter, perimeter, rather, because that, that'll give them a sense of just how big the situation is. So, again, they, they've only been in, actually, today, they were doing some training last week, they're actually out in field today in some degree of full force from what we were told on Friday.
And they'll actually be laying out a grid from where they started, right out through the outskirts, to, to actually map out where, where they find the beetles and what has to be done. My understanding is, a lot of the climbers won't show up until the leaves are off the trees, so in October, in November, you may see a lot of climbers come in to, to actually get up into the trees and see what, see visually where the problems are, because like you said, most, most have seemed to be up high in the trees and not visible from the ground.
The city manager's been very, very proactive in this situation, and he told us on Friday, in fact, the telegram has been very, very receptive and helping out and very supportive. And apparently, they're actually going to be featuring either a page in the newspaper, some portion, to sort of give people almost on a daily basis, updates as to what, you know, what, what area of the community they're surveying, and almost on a day-to-day update, because they, they feel that by engaging the public in this process, it'll speed along the entire process of addressing the threat.
So if a resident or a group of residents want to volunteer as spotters or something like that, is that something that?
We currently don't have any information on that, but I can take the question, and we can raise the question at our next meeting.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
We don't want people climbing trees.
Yeah, I, I mean, that was, that was my, that was my next point, John, which was, you know, if there was some interest in, in having some residents help you out, I wonder how much true help it would be if, if really the, the determination as to whether these things exist or not is, is high up in the trees, which would take a climber, obviously, and that's not something that the average resident would be able to do.
Mr. LeBeau?
Well, first of all, Mr. Magado, have, has it been established with USDA about the area in which they're going to start their inspections? Do we expect to see any more than a quarter a mile away from an affected tree? Actually, do we expect to see any in Shrewsbury in the, with the map the way it is?
People from the USDA? Yes, they're, they're in town today.
I mean, go, expect, inspecting residences?
They, they may go out and inspect residences today, depending on the nature of the calls they're getting.
Certainly. So then I just think it's important that we point out a couple other things that we heard at that meeting in Worcester, that representatives of USDA will be very well credentialed. And we've heard that in other communities, there are people who take advantage of this situation, so no one in Shrewsbury should, you know, someone knocks on their door and says that they can inoculate their trees, or, you know, evaluate their property, or anything for a fee, don't do it. And USDA, I guess they're going to have a uniform or certain shirts they're going to wear, they're also going to have some kind of identification. So just be, be mindful of that, because evidently, in other areas, there were individuals who, scam artists, who would, you know, get people to pay their money to do absolutely nothing.
That's a good point, thank you. I know that, that this process from the very beginning has been one of, of education and notification for the residents, you know, in the affected areas. I know that, you know, you've gone to great lengths to try to mitigate this as, as best as, as you can. How much disruption did you have over the weekend at the, at the South Street, as far as the garage? When I understand from reports that people were very understanding, that, that, you know, the residents were very accepting as to what's going on, but I just wondered how many it affects and, and what measures you're going to take going forward? You're going to be checking IDs and things like that, as far as making sure that they're residents? Are you going to be inspecting bags? To what level, you know, are we going to go to?
Well, I, I think we're going to take appropriate action. We have a, we have until the sixth to work out any of our own protocols. Everything, before we do anything, we're, we're running it through USDA. We have that kind of access to them, even to the point of letters that we've prepared, we send off to them, and they look at and send them back. So we'll, you know, we'll, our people will be prepared, they'll be trained, and we'll handle it in an appropriate fashion. Certainly, we'll be looking at how the city of Worcester handles these kinds of situations. They have a lot more experience with this currently, and we'll come up to speed very, very quickly.
We don't have too many more drop-offs, everything goes to curbside, I think.
That's right. The, the big thing right now is, is how we're going to handle the curbside program, and that, that's my current dilemma right at the moment, trying to figure that one out. We'll have it figured out pretty quickly.
Mr. Chairman? Other questions? Mr. Tattaglin?
Another quick one, to Mr. Knight, or Mr. LeBeau, both tree experts here. We just had an occasion on our street to have some large trees taken down, and these are qualified climbers that go up there. Is there like a, an obverse association? climbers that go up there. Is there like an arborist association, you know, where they're up in these trees anyway up the top, that we could maybe tap into for information?
Well, there is Mass Arborist Association, and I'm sure.
Mass Tree Wardens.
I mean, I'm sure anyone, there's a lot of people walking around now, either looking up in trees, or professionals who are doing work in trees, slowly but surely being educated on what to look for.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as the city, the city had some of their own personnel trained. They're bringing in federal people, they're bringing in state. City has also had some of their people trained. I suspect that we'll be getting some training from some of our people. Again, this will ramp up, and we're going to really rely on the USDA, because they've been around the horn on this on a couple of times. They're very confident, they seem extremely confident. They're very, very concerned, you know, the concern that they expressed from the initial meeting, I have with them, of the need to get on top of this right from the very, very beginning, to really drive that point home very clearly. We've been reacting to that and trying to get up to speed ourselves as quickly as we can.
Is there, my last question is, is there any, are we eligible in any way for any reimbursement and/or grant money to be able to deal with this, the local effort that we're putting forth to try to deal with this? Is there anything that's available that you're aware of?
Currently, currently, no, but we've had some, the meeting on the, my dates are starting to run together already, the 19th. There were also members of the legislative delegation at that meeting, and the question of funding came up. So the legislative delegation is well aware of what this is happening, how it's going to be impacting individual communities. Right now, our primary expense has been staff time. We really haven't expended any in printing and that kind of thing. If we start getting to some actual incurred expenses, then we're going to have to consider how we're going to fund that. So it may be a situation where we may have to see the finance committee for reserve fund transfer. We have to get into some actual expenditures of funds and then seek reimbursement later in the day. I suspect that kind of discussion will probably develop over the next several weeks, once we start getting a sense of the nature of the threat.
Yeah, I know Nancy talked about even with the fall collections down at the landfill, trying to get the wood, the machine to process, process the material down fine, you know, every, in between every other pickup, so that we don't have to generate a lot of material that hasn't been at least taken care of.
That's one of the processes.
And that's going to cost, there's some costs associated with that.
That was one of the process issues that the USDA went up with us today.
Well, I know the effort so far has been really based in containment and trying to mitigate this the best that we can. I appreciate your efforts so far and the education that you've provided to everybody. I'm glad that this isn't a public health issue, but it is a serious issue as far as trying to maintain our trees in town and trying to put safe procedures in place in order to preserve the trees that we have here in town. Is there any other questions for members of the board?
Just one.
Selecting Miller.
If no beetle is found through these efforts in Shrewsbury, how long do we remain in the regulated area?
Until they achieve eradication.
So that could be up to?
Several years.
Is it seven or eight years? Okay. So it doesn't matter if it's found?
It takes them three, three years to eradicate, and then they monitor for four years, three to four years.
So at a minimum, this area stays in the regulated?
As they explained it to me, you should not expect to see the regulated area get any smaller, but it may get larger.
Right. Okay, thank you.
But again, you know, if they, after they do their initial survey, they'll, they're going to recalibrate, and they'll tell us what the deal is at that time. I think the important thing everyone to remember is it's a very serious threat, that we're on top of it, and that we're getting complete and total cooperation and access with both the federal, state, and with the city of Worcester. You know, the city of Worcester, the city manager was very gracious to make available the Clark Street location to not only the town of Shrewsbury, but also for those residents in the regulated area of Holden, Boylston, and West Boylston. Because everyone realizes very quickly, this isn't, this isn't a city or town issue. This is an issue for the region to deal with.
Any other questions for members of the board? Thank you very much, Mr. Neip, for coming before us.
We have a big finish.
Yep.
Never beat him.
Why don't you do the finish?
The conclusions. To date, there is no confirmation of Asian longhorn beetle in Shrewsbury. The USDA is working with the Department of Conservation and Recreation is highly expert in handling this matter, has made it clear that this issue will be getting its highest attention. The city of Worcester has also made it clear that it will assist in any possible way. Residents are advised that there is no reason to seek private tree treatments to protect trees against Asian longhorn beetles. The Massachusetts ALB Cooperative eradication program will treat ALB host trees with the specified brand of regulated area with a specially formulated and measured treatment process that no charge to homeowners. There will be no over-the-counter treatments formulated especially for the Asian longhorn beetle.
I think that goes to John's point, okay? If someone knocks on your door and says they've got a way to inoculate your trees for a price, you should send them away. Okay? The only people that'll be doing that will be USDA contractors operating under the USDA label. No private activity of this type will be taking place.
Okay. Residents must be vigilant and call reports to the federal ALB office located at Skyline Drive at 508-799-8330. They also can call Massachusetts Pet Alert hotline at 617-626-1779. Reports may also be submitted over the web at www.masnrc.org/pessalbreportaspx.
It'd be on our website.
Be the easiest way to get to it.
Just link right there.
The best source of information will be the town's website, www.shrewsburymass.gov. Questions may be directed to Daniel Magado at 841-8508, or they can call me at 508-841-8513. Residents must be careful not to spread the infestation, which requires strict adherence to the regulatory order issued by DCR. Care must be taken not to move wood, wood waste or wood products from within the regulated to the outside of the regulated area. A Shrewsbury community meeting will be held in the event there is a confirmation of ALB in Shrewsbury or the regulated area is expanded further. The yard waste drop-off program resumes September 6th. Wood waste a half inch or greater from addresses within the regulated area will not be accepted and may be disposed of off of city of Worcester's location on Clark Street. Addresses will be checked at the gate. There will be staff inspecting bags. Full details of the program can be viewed again on the Shrewsbury website at www.shrewsbury/mass.gov. The curbside program will be planned on the week of October 20th through 24th. Plans are being finalized as to how yard waste collected within the regulator will be handled.
Any other questions for members of the board?
No, no.
Again, thank you very much for coming before us and educating us and?
Like I said, I know I've got a dozen complaints I get on emails last, over the last week when I was away. I've got to check out in the next few days. I think things will be a little busy.
Was there something that we didn't handle that you?
There were two questions, if I'm allowed to just ask, that I didn't hear discussed in this or seen in the literature previously. I guess first is the, you know, the effort and the seriousness of this nature, I agree, has been handled very well, and the communication has been tremendous. So thank you for that. I would just ask, in terms of what has been articulated around the yard waste program at the drop-off center for the sixth, is great news for those of us with small backyards. What I'm curious, is there any ability to consider a change in the hours, given that today, before this crisis, the 11:30 bell rings with long lines of traffic still trying to beat the end of the time? I imagine license checks, registrations, I can imagine much longer wait times for what is a drop-off turning into a stay, not to mention traffic snarls out on South Street that are already sometimes very lengthy at that end of the bell. I know Clark Street has, you know, Saturday all day and/or Wednesdays. If there's been any consideration to that, if there could be, it might be, you know, it's going to be hard to imagine everything getting done in those small number of hours. So I was curious if we've given consideration or could we extend?
I think that's a good suggestion. We should probably do that. That's a great idea.
That'd be great, if you can, considering it might just help some real traffic issues and other things where people are struggling, you know, with all the changes.
I think it's a good idea. I think we can do that.
The other one is, just in general, obviously, the seriousness of the nature has been very well articulated. But for, I heard you speak of wood wastes within the regulated areas. But those folks who actually have wood businesses, wood cutting particularly, I can think of one or two that fall within the regulated areas, are there special provisions or inspections or things that will allow them to conduct their business, or homeowners who might buy wood from such folks, that we, as a region, don't inadvertently spread this beyond, which nobody would want to? I mean, but those folks still need to make a living. You know, are there things that, you got stockpiles of corkwood sitting there. You really don't know the source of where it was over the last 18, 24 months while seasoned. Those beetles, apparently, if they can travel in pallets, they can travel in stockwood piles. So are there provisions around that? I didn't hear that spoken to. Obviously, we were talking about waste, but not wood cutting or wood business?
Yes. What's part of the reason why the USDA wants the list of the green industries is they need to visit all these locations and talk with each of the proprietors on that kind of issue.
Okay.
In order to create a system of, you know, how to handle each person's individual issue. Because they know that if they don't come up with a way of addressing it, people are going to be forced to doing things that may not be entirely appropriate. So that's part of the process that we're going to start dealing. Each of the communities are going to have to deal with the business people in their community to try to come up with these types of solutions. Because we're into this not for just this season, but it could be for several, several seasons.
And particularly this season, with oil, you know, trying to, you know, get wood today. So as a homeowner, I guess I'm understanding, there's really nothing we should worry about, about where we're purchasing wood products, you know, firewood per se, length, full of four-foot length, split and whatever, from any of those businesses, no matter what. That's in process, that those businesses have been addressed as a green industry. So we should be free to take a load tomorrow, next week, with the assumption that we don't really have to worry, other than commonsensically, looking at wood product, so it doesn't land up in the other industry of Shrewsbury because you bought a quart of wood from somebody who's in the regulated area selling wood products they cut in the last?
Anybody within the regulated area right now.
No. Right now, that program isn't established, so you should not accept a delivery.
Okay. So those folks might be out of business until these, okay.
Or you're going to find customers within the regulated area to deliver to.
Okay.
As of, you know, what I described to you is something that will transpire over the next several weeks.
Okay.
But which is, which is again, why the city manager of last week sent out the letter, and then I mimicked his letter, because we wanted to get the word out to these people as soon as possible, and also start to make these arrangements so that people aren't put into a bad situation.
Right.
And the other problem is you get a lot of larger woodcutters, they actually ship that a case.
Yeah, I mean, it goes everywhere.
Goes everywhere.
So it is a Worcester regional issue, so?
It's going to be a problem. I understand some heavy fines, too, if you get caught moving outside the regulated area with the product.
Okay.
And people that are in that business should contact the USDA, if they haven't already gotten that information.
Okay. But you're asking homeowners to be at least cognizant of where they're buying it from?
Absolutely correct.
Pay attention to these regulated areas. Don't purchase from within.
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are good questions. If you could tell us what your name and address is for the meeting notes, that would be helpful.
It's Jamie King, 6 Ryan Road.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, John, for that presentation.